I'd like to call the September 5th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council to order. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity for residents to address the council on items not on the agenda that evening. This portion of the meeting is from approximately 6:30 to 6:55. If you wish to address the council at that time, please contact the city manager's office at 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If we have time after scheduled speakers, we do open it up to the floor. If you have any questions about this portion of the meeting, which is not recorded or televised, again, please call the city manager's office at 949-8412. We'll begin today's meeting with an HRA meeting. I'd like to call the HRA meeting to order. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the HRA meeting held on February 14th, 2017?
Move approval of the HRA meeting minutes.
Second.
Any corrections to those? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item is a resolution to approve the proposed 2018 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the proposed 2018 HRA budget of $200,000. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The levy for the HRA and the city, this will be later on in the agenda as well, preliminary levy and budget for both the city and HRA need to be set before the end of September. We are ready to do that. We have two meetings in September, but we're ready to do that at our first meeting in September. In the case of the HRA, and that's the item that we're going to cover in the HRA meeting, Minnesota law authorizes cities to levy for an HRA a set amount of dollars. Actually, by law, our HRA would be allowed to levy up to almost $1.8 million for housing and redevelopment activity in our community. We have been able to, and we continue to and recommend, a $200,000 levy once again this year. And as you know, and this is the same situation as in past years, this levy is mainly staff time to support all of our housing and redevelopment activities and projects. In fact, you'll see when we get to the consent agenda, I have an update on more projects related to our CDBG grant program and housing projects and redevelopment projects there as well. As you'll hear again at the city portion of the levy discussion too, in December, the council will be asked to finalize the levy and budget at the last meeting of the year. Between now and that time, the levy and the budget could be reduced, but it couldn't be raised. So basically, what we're doing this evening is setting our ceiling. Our proposal is to keep this levy at $200,000, not to raise it, cannot raise it, or lower it, but your action would be to approve that proposed levy and budget for HRA for 2018.
Mr. Case, you have a question?
Kathy might have been first.
Were you first?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nelson.
We've been talking about moving this up from $200,000 for the last couple budget sessions. And I'd almost like to consider moving it to $250,000, a small increase. We may lose block grant money in the future. It's been talked about at the federal level. This wouldn't make up for it, but I think it's been at $200,000 for at least a decade, maybe longer. I wouldn't see that 250 would be, I'd even go for 225, but I'd like to go up a small amount. But maybe no one agrees with me here.
Well, no, but I thought you said, Mr. Getchell, we cannot go above 200.
Well, what you said, you can. You can go up to 1.8 million, actually, but I think the discussion that maybe we had at workshop was the capital levy, the capital improvement levy is the one that we had proposed to increase. Councilmember Nelson, you're right, you have brought this up. The reaction that we had was that it was a capital improvement levy that we thought needed a little bit of a boost as opposed to the HRA levy. So if you're looking at raising one of the special levies outside the general fund levy, it was the CIP levy. We can continue to explore a higher levy into the future. We think that this amount is sufficient for 2018. Once again, it may not be for 2019. We feel it is for 2018. And we do have some tools at our disposal, the HRA does, outside of the levy to work on housing and redevelopment projects that don't fit in here. So this doesn't lock us in to any future housing and redevelopment projects. If there's a certain development comes, there's economic development funds, or the ability of the HRA to use other tools that aren't just what was levied for this time. But I will say, as the mayor said, you cannot set a higher levy later. So if you did want to go higher, now would be the time.
Councilmember Case.
Mr. Getchell, what we set tonight will drive, after the state comes through with its formula, what people actually end up seeing as a tax increase, correct? And the HRA is part of that whole large package.
Correct.
So I know that we've been looking at totals that are tucked up underneath the next whole number. And so I agree with you, and I've been one to suggest that since, I think for 15 years or so, we've had a 0% increase in the HRA levy. So I've been proponent of also looking at raising that over time, but I want to see it in the context of a study this next year and see it in the context of the whole picture. And I don't feel like, even as much as I agree with you that it needs to go up at some point, I don't feel like tonight's the night to do it. And I know that we're sensitive to what that final tax number looks like, even though some of that's outside of our control based on state formula and things like that. So I don't want to do it tonight at the very last moment, but I completely support Councilmember Nelson's idea that there are things that we need to be looking at doing, from our major center area improvements to housing pricing diversity, stock issues, I mean, just looking at what we can do to incentivize what we want to do in housing out in our community. Just not this year in this way.
Yeah, thank you.
Could I at least say, can we have a definite look at an increase before 2019 and not try to do it tonight? But I would like that to be sort of in, you know, council telling staff to start taking a look at it, what we might do if we raised it and get us a little more information by 2019. That's a whole year from now.
I think it would be important to know, what are we going to use the money for?
Agreed.
I think, Councilmember, put your works through. You're next.
Right. I was just going to say the same thing, that in years past, I have been a proponent also of increasing the HRA, just because I think that there are so many needs out there that we could, that would benefit our residents if we did. However, I am very concerned about earmarking money already or saying that we will increase the capital improvements and then trying to do these simultaneously. I would rather do the same thing, and that is wait, that Councilmember Case suggested, and that is wait, let's see what we're going to be spending our money on and look out into the future. Maybe 2019, but maybe no later than 2020, because I know that we've got a number of capital improvement projects that we really must get done and we've committed to. And so, you know, I mean, we have to be concerned about how much money is out there that we are committing to.
Councilmember Rahul.
I guess I'll pile on to the same concept. I really think that we shouldn't look at just raising it to raise it. I think we need to be driven by needs as opposed to driven by saying, well, it's been the same for a long time, and so therefore we should raise it. If we have a legitimate need to raise it, let's look at that need and let's figure out how it fits into the overall budget and the city's spending, and then that's evaluated. But, you know, just to raise it, just to say, well, it's been the same, I don't think is a good idea. I think we need, we don't know how much to raise it. You know, maybe we need to raise it by doubling, you know, who knows? We really need to look at, what is the need that's driving a need for an increase? Right now, we don't have a need, so I'm very comfortable leaving it set at the 200,000 for this year.
Right. Sounds like everybody agrees with that. Sir, motion.
I would move to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed 2018 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and accept the proposed 2017 HRA budget of $200,000. That sounds redundant. That's my motion, though.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll go back into the council meeting now. And is there a motion for approval of the agenda for today's meeting?
Move approval.
Is there anything to add or delete? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the city council workshop held Tuesday, August 8th, and the city council meeting held Tuesday, August 8th?
Do you want them together? Can be.
The way, yeah, it can be, yep.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those minutes?
No.
There never is, so I figured we might as well do it together. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Consent calendar items A through I.
Move approval.
Second.
Any corrections, or any questions on any of those?
I do have one minor item to remove on your motion. So, and item F, that's what I was referring to in the HRA meeting regarding CDBG dollars that we are being able to use for a grant program for many of our nonprofits on their actual buildings and facilities. So you can see that we have grant agreements with Prop and the Prop shop, Emmanuel Lutheran Edenville to physical improvements to their facilities using CDBG funds. And that was something that I had talked about in the Friday report, and we sent out proposals, and we received back a lot of really good proposals to use this pass-through money, money that the city receives from the federal government, so it's pass-through. So I just want to explain that item, because it's a good thing. It's a positive item. However, the Eden Dale item, that agreement has not been finalized, so I'd ask that you approve the consent agenda with the exception of the Eden Dale agreement and item F. Everything else is good to go. There was some discussion between the attorneys, there's still some negotiation on the grant agreements that didn't come to fruition. We wanted to get everything in the packet in case it was ready, but we need to pull that out for now.
So are we pulling F or just the Eden Dale?
You're pulling just the Eden Dale part of F. Everything else is good.
Do we need to have an amendment to the original motion?
Yes, to add that, to say approve the consent agenda with the exception of the Eden Dale portion of item F.
Okay, and who made the motion?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, so...
Do you accept the amendment?
I accept the amendment of...
Under?
Oh. I can just...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Yes. All right. All right, all in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to our first public hearing, which in fact is, all we are doing on this particular issue is having the public hearing. It's for the vacation of a drainage utility and roadway easement. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, this is related to the Prairie Bluffs senior housing development, and they've requested a vacation of a number of easements to facilitate new construction. And as you may recall, with almost all vacation of easements, there will be new easements that will be dedicated at a future date. The mayor is exactly correct. We are not prepared tonight to pass a resolution to vacate the easement because the developer is working with one of our utilities in terms of where the utilities could be located that are in the easement. However, we did publish for this public hearing, want to keep things moving along, so we had asked that you open the public hearing, hold the public hearing, and a future council meeting would include the resolution for vacation.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the vacation of this easement? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Eden Prairie Assembly of God is the next public hearing. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This project is before you as a first reading of an ordinance for a planned unit district review on 10 acres. That is the Assembly of God Church located at 16591 Duck Lake Trail. What's being proposed is an addition to this church. The existing building is approximately 22,000 and almost 300 square feet, and they're proposing an addition to the property and a remodeling of the property. There are not any waivers being requested with this project, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the project as to the city council as well. We do have a presentation tonight from Assembly of God Church, so they're going to go through the details of their project, and then staff and Assembly of God Church representatives can answer any questions you have, and then we would hold a public hearing. So I believe we have Station 19 Architects here to go through a presentation on the project.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Nicole Thompson with Station 19 Architects, and I'm here to present the project to you tonight. Eden Prairie Assembly of God is planning an expansion for more space to minister effectively, for more opportunities to reach people, and for more impact to advance God's kingdom today and tomorrow. The key project goals of the project are to strengthen their identity, to expand education for all ages, and to expand their gathering and hospitality space. So I'll start by running through the site. We're on a 10-acre site, and right now, the proposal is for about a 12,000-square-foot one- and two-story addition on the northeast, I'm sorry, yeah, the northeast corner, predominantly education space. The parking lot will remain intact as it is today. There's about 186 parking stalls on the site, and there are seven accessible stalls. One of the comments from Planning Commission was to address the accessibility of those stalls, and we have done that in this document that you have before you. We have widened the parking stalls as well as provided an accessible access lane between each of the stalls at that location. We recommend, as professionals in serving ministries, a two-to-one ratio, so the 186 parking stalls would serve a 300 to a 350-seat auditorium, which they have, that number of seats set up. However, we do meet the ordinance based on area of occupancy, which would be 144 as required by the city ordinance. We know there are some nonconformities with the city ordinance at this time, and that is something that the church would like to address at a future building phase. Next slide is looking a little bit more in detail, if you can squint your eyes at this. But to address the infiltration basin on the south side of the site, that is provided to help support us in infiltration for the new addition to the project. So it's specifically focused on the new addition piece of the site. We're disturbing about .92 acres on the site with the addition and the infiltration basin, but we are not going over the impervious amount for the Shoreland District. We're sitting right at about the 24.2% versus the 30 maximum that's allowed. Some things that we addressed from Planning Commission is we preserved the 20-inch maple on the north side of the site, and we rerouted the sidewalk around that in addressing that comment. The other one is we did relocate the bike racks, so they were out of the flow of coming to church, so they were pushed to the side. Some other things that we addressed that were comments from Planning Commission, and I think I'll slip to the landscape plan to help talk about that a little more, and again, squint a little if you will. But what we, some of the conversations were the retaining block wall on the north side of the building that we are in getting the exiting out of the north side of the building. We did push the sidewalk to the north a little bit to provide some landscape space so that we can soften that retaining wall. We did explore, looking at an alternative material, and decided to stick with the retaining wall block, but move the sidewalk and provide landscaping to provide additional softening there. We'll be able to show that a little more in the elevations that will follow these drawings. The other one is the stair on the north side. We did some additional landscaping and some additional design on that stair. All the landscaping, we provide additional color. We did remove a couple of trees. There are three apple trees on the east side of the building and one on the south side of the building that are being removed and six arborvitae, but we are replacing the apple trees with some new ones on the east side as well as on the north side of the building to provide some color and different experiences during the seasons. Also, the owner will be adding additional landscaping around the monument sign to address some of the comments from Planning Commission as well that will be in alignment with some of the plantings that we're addressing here in the plan. Regarding the plans, the lower level is before you. We have three large group spaces for classes for the student ministries as well as adults, but they'll be multi-use. One of the things we really tried hard to do was to minimize the exiting on the east side of the building towards Eden Prairie Road, so we did move and do a lot of the exiting to the north so that we could keep that facade and that elevation free of sidewalks and doors, and that allowed us to really landscape around the front of that building nicely. So those were intentional moves to preserve that view on Eden Prairie Road. On the main level, you can see the addition on the northeast corner. We have five classrooms. This is predominantly for the 0 to 5th grade in that area, so it's secure. And then we've also expanded their lobby, again, for better flow between services, and then provided adequate accessible restrooms on the main level and the lower level for hospitality. I'll jump to the elevations. This is the elevation from Eden Prairie Road. We, all of the elevations of the addition have 75% or more Class 1 materials. Those materials are, and I do have a slide in the presentation, I also have actual samples down here below if you'd like me to pass those along, but we are using exposed aggregate precast concrete on the corner, and then we're using precast with a face brick in the centerpiece. We are using a UC 500 metal panel, but to address some of the comments from Planning Commission, that's our Class 2 material. We have 25% or less on the building. We are providing additional rigidity by using a stronger gauge steel and also using rigid insulation behind them to minimize the oil canning, which was brought up as a concern there. We also have identified in the elevations a placeholder for signage that will meet all the city ordinances and design standards. Those designs will come, the church is working on some rebranding, and that will follow in a application. This is the north elevation. You can see we're adding some trees along the existing building, which is, the three trees are in front of an existing elevation on the side. We did add some more detail to the stair, the metal stair there, and then would paint that to match the darker brown trim that's on the fascia. And then, again, landscaping to soften the fronts of the retaining wall at that location. This is the main entry. This is as you're looking towards the building from the parking lot, that entrance facade that says "Welcome," and that is glass and metal entrance facade storefront, and there will be signage at this location as well. And not much happening on the south side. One thing I did not note is we will not be taking any trees down on the south side of the building as part of the infiltration piece. I know that was a concern of neighbors, but we are not doing that. This is our finish board, which I have here, and I can pass that when I complete here, but you see the exposed aggregate concrete. It is tinted, so it has a warm tint to it versus just gray. A warm face brick, brown in color. The lower corner is a stucco. We have some areas where we're refacing existing with some stucco, minimal, and then the, I'm sorry, the retaining wall block in the lower right-hand corner, and then above you can see the middle colors. We're using a warm champagne aluminum and metal panel, and then the dark bronze as the warm fascia. I just want to close, this is, these last two slides are not in your packet, so these were just to help communicate the project to you. We did include a 3D view here to help communicate the project, how it would look from Duck Lake Trail and Eden Prairie Road. This is from a vantage point of a six-foot-tall person standing on the trail, so if you're looking up at the building. But just to give you an idea of the amount of landscaping and maturity, kind of at this time of year, we're kind of playing with the flowers and late August of the grasses a little bit for you, but anyway, just to give you a snapshot of that new look for Eden Prairie Assembly of God. I'm going to let Pastor Jack say a few words, and then we're available for questions.
Thank you, Nicole. My name is Jack Perrin, and it's good to finally see you in the flesh instead of just in newsprint. You all look more three-dimensional. Eden Prairie Assembly is a church that is unlike many other churches. It's not a megachurch, and probably will not be a megachurch. A megachurch being over 2,000 in attendance, it's simply, the site that we have would simply not support that, and we're not asking for that. But what we are looking for is an opportunity to enhance our base, our facilities, so that we can invest more into this community. I just spent 10 minutes putting together a list of some of the things that might illustrate this idea of a church being a community asset. Those of you who attend church, you know that a church can be an asset to the community. But we have a community garden. We provide parking for the community, the tennis court and the basketball court. Weekly, we have people from the community come, people who are disadvantaged, and they can receive bread absolutely free. The same is true with groceries, general groceries, once a week. We provide emergency financial help for residents, whether they attend the church or not. We provide ad hoc neighborhood diffusing over certain issues, working with a family. Right now, both sides of the families, both families are immigrants, and they had a violent episode over a traffic situation, and so we'll be working with them. They're right down at the end of my street, and so we'll be working with them, helping to diffuse some of the misunderstandings that are rife. We help with our Somali guests and friends to adjust to Western life. We have ESL teachers in our church who have worked with the Chinese community as well as the Somali community, and have also served on the Human Rights Commission. We have connections with social workers to help families in crisis. We are presently helping a victim of human trafficking that came to us through a connection that involved her work with the police, and we have gotten her into a safe environment and helped her with her counseling issues. We do not provide the counseling because that's outside of our expertise, but we pay for it. And helping her to be in a safe environment and get employment and be a productive member of society. We helped someone return some stolen goods to a Viking family as part of his restitution program years ago. We've helped several people manage their alcoholism. We've helped people get off of their heroin addictions and other narcotics. When a family home in the city becomes a crime scene because of a terrible murder or something like... because of a terrible murder or something like that, our church has a history of coming in at a moment's notice and pulling the family out and providing, free of cost to them, providing private and safe homes with counseling until there they can get their house back. And that even involves taking care of their pets and making sure that their children adjust through the trauma and things like that. We, a few years ago, had multiple fatalities in a 494 accident out here. And we were able to provide critical incident stress management counseling to our first responders, which I'm trained in that area. We help firefighters as well. We had, I believe he was a gun and firefighter, whose brother was a pilot a few years ago. He was hauling a whole plane full of kids, and it crashed. And sadly, they were all killed, and our firefighter needed to get home. So we paid for him to be able to go and help with the funeral. We pay funeral expenses for many needy people, people in the Russian community, some of them even from Shakopee. But even when we had the Mandy Matula situation here, we worked real hard to strive to help the city workers who were traumatized by the violent situation that happened right out here in the parking lot. I was here the next day at city manager's request and worked with other churches. We even did things like providing hot coffee for the searchers, people who were looking for evidence at the supposed crime scene. We provided snacks and tried to keep them warm. We provide roll-offs so that groups can go in and help some of our citizens that have problems with hoarding. And we actually want to see people be able to be helped so that they can stay in their homes and still be functional. We've had several free funerals for a firefighter and also a retired firefighter who died tragically. This is a funny one. We caught a corrupt TSA agent and cooperated with the Department of Homeland Security to ensure that his matter was resolved. It was across state lines, and that's a great story. I'll take you to coffee and tell you sometime. We had people running the armory in Minneapolis when the tornado came through a few years ago. We helped pay for safety camp. We're nonpolitical, and yet we also enjoy being a voting place. We provide multiple scholarships to communities' teens each year for college. We helped an illegal alien -- we helped an illegal alien get right with the law and then return to Mexico, fulfill the requirements of the law. We wrote some letters. We did what intervention we could. And then six months later, she was allowed to come back and go through the process. So that was very good. We also helped a young lady whose young husband committed suicide tragically. She was a Chinese national, but she was here legally. Her parents wanted to come to the funeral, and he was a Communist Party official in the Hunan province. And so with the help of our police chief, we were able to get him a visa, get him over here, and then we did the funeral for her. And paid for all of that. We see our church as a place that would be open for refuge, for citizens. In fact, our planning looks forward to any kind of situation where we might need to open our doors. I know Pax Christie does this. Father Tim was a dear friend of mine, and he kind of set the bar high. We're aiming for that. We're a much smaller church. But I would like to say that finally, if you are kind enough to approve this request before you, we'll be one step closer to making the City Sprinkler evangelist smile. I'm talking about Chief Espenson. Since I met him, I've heard the evangelism of sprinklers, and I have been converted. And we want to do our best. We also want to improve our footprint. We apologize that the building looked great in 1970, but we are remiss in keeping it up to speed. But we intend to remedy that over the next few years. Thank you, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. That was very impressive to come up with all those things in 10 minutes. My gosh, if you had a half hour, you'd probably have a really, really long list. Yeah, it is a beautiful improvement to the current site, and I'm excited for you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and approve first reading of an ordinance for PUD district review on 10.6 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Case, you wanted to speak. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I voted for it, and I support the project completely. I just had a really a process question from the city standpoint. There were a couple of things that were noncompliant, and the -- within this agreement is the idea that the next time this project, they would come in for a project, we would address the noncompliance at that point. And I just wonder historically, precedent-wise, if that's something that we do. And then why not address some of it this time? I know that came up a little bit in Planning Commission minutes. So I -- doesn't impede or impact the approval of this project. I support it. I'm glad we passed it. But maybe just a quick comment about the noncompliance piece. Ongoing with other projects, not this one particularly.
Ms. Jeremiah.
Our council member Case. We really wanted to work with the church with regard to their resources and what made the most sense to bring the project gradually into greater compliance. They didn't have the resources at this time to bring it into full compliance, but they do have plans, excuse me, to do additional improvements in the future. So we have done this type of thing before. Sometimes we actually grant waivers and accept the nonconforming conditions. In this case, we do believe that they can be rectified in the future as they continue to improve the facility. So we're not granting waivers to those. We're just looking to the future.
Thank you. It's very satisfactory, and I'm really extremely happy for this, and I wish all of you the best.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to seeing it. All right, our next public hearing is a code amendment related to parks and open space zoning district. Mr. Getchow.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The current iteration of our comprehensive plan update is aspire Eden Prairie, and you know that's been underway for the last year, and it will be into next year. But if you look back 10 years ago, at the last update of our comprehensive plan, we created a category, adopted a category called Parks and Open Space. And there obviously are a number of properties in our city, our own parks and open space, where we've finally gotten around to setting up all the language, the text language that is needed in our zoning code for park and open space districts. So if you go through the packet, you could see that we have setbacks and height requirements and regulations for this new park and open space district. So what you have before you tonight is a public hearing and draft language and regulations for a new park and open space zoning district. And then at a future date, we would then move to rezone or zone these publicly-owned properties to bring them into compliance with the comprehensive plan. But tonight's action was the creation of the text language and the regulations for park and open space zoning district.
Any questions for Mr. Getchow? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this issue? Is there a motion?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 11 relating to adding the Park and Open Space Zoning District and associated amendments of other sections of Chapter 11 related to the Park and Open Space Zoning District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval, payment of claims.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Worstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lookins?
Aye.
Next, we have a report from our city manager. He would like us to adopt a resolution certifying the proposed 2018 property tax levy, et cetera.
Et cetera, yes. Mayor and Council, thank you. At the HRA meeting, I had mentioned that this is the date and time where we need to set a preliminary tax leviation budget for the coming year, for 2018. As you know, we prepare two-year budgets in Eden Prairie. So beginning earlier this year, we began the process of actually putting together a 2018 and 2019 budget. So a lot of the material that is in the packet gives data related to a budget for both 2018 and 19. I'm going to give some statistics for that as well. But each year, the city needs to take action on an annual basis on the leviation budget. So even if I talk a little bit about 2019 and 2018, the action tonight is 2018. It's also important to note that the two-year budget process does begin built upon the work plans that the city departments begin to work on, all the city divisions. And there's been presentations on the work plans, and we received quite a bit of input from our community survey, and that's done every other year, and that leads into this budget process as well. And several workshops are devoted to setting goals and then putting budget documents together, all leading up to the end of the year. So there's still more time for budget discussion. In fact, we're going to kick off some budget engagement using our Facebook page here in September and October as we get toward the December approval of the budget. I think it was Councilmember Case that said notices will go out. I think it would be in November, based on your actions that you take on a preliminary budget, which would show people what their proposed taxes would be next year and telling them, based on the action that you set tonight, to come to a hearing on December 12th, I believe it is, where we will have a presentation and a hearing on the 2018 budget. But again, tonight's action is to set a ceiling. We'll call it a ceiling or preliminary budget and levy. And as you know, based on conversations in June and July, the -- looking at the 30,000-foot view, the proposal at this time is a tax levy, a total tax levy, as we talked about. That includes a debt levy. That includes a general fund levy. That includes the capital improvement levy, of which we, as you remember from a workshop, there was a point in time when we had a capital improvement levy of $1 million annually. And that's currently, it's been at $200,000. It's proposed to be at $300,000 next year, and then $400,000 in '19. We're not proposing to get back to $1 million, but we need to build that up a little bit. That was in reference when we talked about the HRA levy. But as I said earlier, the proposal is a 3.9% increase in the levy for 2018. And actually, as we're preparing to look to 2019, we're looking at 3%. So that's even lower in '19, a little bit higher in 2018. Our 10-year average on our property tax levy has actually been under 2%. So our running 10-year average is 1.8%, and our five-year average, if you include these numbers, is about 3%. So we are very conservative, you know, in terms of our levy. And I think this year is going to be another scenario where we will be, from what I know from what other cities are doing, we'll be once again in that lower quartile of tax levies. Also, the budget. Earlier, the earlier proposal with a 3.9% levy was a 4.4% increase, but we had a little bit of a gap between revenues and expenditures when we met in the summertime. And between now, between the summer and now, we've been able to lower that gap. We've cut that gap in half to where that budget should be able to come down. We completely closed the gap to 4% or just under slightly over 4%. The plan is to provide a completely balanced budget while not increasing the levy beyond that proposal of 3.9%. 3.9% was a percent that we were talking about this summer. It's a percent that we're talking about now and what we hope to talk about in December. We will hopefully be able to lower expenditures to bring a balanced budget, and then that budget is at that lower number as well. We're just getting tax impact numbers right now. So when you talk about, well, what does that increase mean? If your home value was approximately the same, your taxes would actually be, residential taxes would be flat. But the values of homes continue to go up. So if you look at the median-valued home in 2018 for taxes compared to 2019, this proposed levy equates to a grand total of $44 a year. So that's about a 3.5% or just over a 3.5% increase. So even less than what the levy proposed is. In commercial taxes, on a proposed, I believe it's $2 million, commercial property, would see an increase of under 1%. And if I recall, last year, there was a decrease. So commercial taxes have seen, I think if you averaged it out over the last two years, maybe even three would be a decrease in taxes based on what's being proposed. And then finally, as I mentioned, in terms of the timeline, the council's going to be asked to look at all of our enterprise fund budgets. We're going to further refine this budget, and that would all lead into action, final action that has to be taken by the middle of December. But the resolution before you tonight is to set the preliminary levy in the preliminary budget and then work toward that final budget approval at the end of the year. And I can certainly answer any other questions that you may have. But there's been quite a bit of discussion, and there's a good amount of documentation in the packet at the department level on the proposed budget.
Any questions for Mr. Getchow?
I would move to adopt the resolution that certifies the proposed 2018 property tax levy to be $37,149,820, and sets December 12th, 2017, as the meeting, which will include discussion of the budget and provide for public comment, and accepts the proposed 2018 budget of $48,767,526 and consents and approves the HRA tax levy of $200,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other business to bring before the council tonight? Hearing none. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.